I'd like to call to order this special work session of the Clearwater City Council. Let me remind you that this is a work session and consequently, no public comment will be provided at this time. And with that, I will ask Mr. Matt Swell to take over.
Phil, did you want to say anything?
No, no, you go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So, last month, on the 25th of February, we met with the City Council to collect Duncan Webb, our consultant, theater consultant, provide some information about the market that we are currently in as it relates to events, the type of events that we're looking at and having here in Clearwater, in Coachman Park. Today is the second half of his report back to us, and it's really going to focus on the financial model and the business plan. So that's what we're going to lead off today's conversation. We'll follow that with Darryl Block from Stancheck, who talked a little bit about the retractable versus permanent options. And then Chris Bray from Jewel Shook is going to talk about some of the seating options that are out there. And then I'll finish up with some information about the impact of what has been presented to us from a financial perspective. With that, I would encourage all of the council to use this as an information gathering meeting. We have four items that we're focused on as far as wanting to get some direction on Thursday. And obviously, this is a very complex issue, so you're going to hear a lot of different things today and probably between now and Thursday, so I encourage you to keep an open mind. The items that we're going to look at, looking to give some direction on for Thursday, is whether or not the council is comfortable moving forward based on the financial information that you're going to hear today, whether or not the roofing system that you desire is a retractable or a permanent structure, whether you're comfortable with a rate that is consistent with the one that we talked about in February and that we are still recommending. And then finally, whether or not there are other elements to managing Clearwater that you would like to, as a council, discuss and hone in on at the next meeting. With that, I'll hand it over to Duncan Webb, Web Management Services.
Thank you, Micah. Mayor, members of council, thank you for inviting me back to speak with you again about the amphitheater project. You'll recall, we were here--
Excuse me, was it-- let me ask again that you identify yourself--
Yes, Duncan Webb, President of Web Management Services, 501 Fifth Avenue, New York, New York. All right. So, I'm here today to give you the second part of a feasibility study on this idea of the amphitheater. So, what we've done so far is investigated the overall idea. Does it make sense? So, we looked at the characteristics, growth, and trends in the marketplace, the level and nature of demand, what is the regional competitive opportunity, and then, really importantly, what is the best project to advance community goals? You'll recall, this is a slide that I presented last month. So, we liked the idea of covered seats, excellent technology, and expanded backstage because they will attract strong promoters, who will book our quality artists, who will attract regional audiences, who will then positively impact downtown Clearwater. The fully developed amphitheater serving a range of community goals is not likely to generate significant profits. The key driver is food and beverage operations. And we believe that the latest seating plan cover could be slightly reduced, but what we really want the focus to be on is, now with the design team, is to look at the opportunities for temporary, flexible, retractable elements so as to enhance the site as a park-like setting when it's not in use as a performance. And we believe that that's critically important. And as a part of that also, the rake, the slope of the lawn. So, we said, "Let's test seating capacity in 2,500 to 3,000 seats with a total capacity of 15,000." And then, in our discussion after, we decided to have a build a business plan based on a 3,000 seating capacity, which I've done. So now, we head into the business plan, operating goals, talking about governance, programming, staffing and leadership, facility management, our pro forma operating budget, and then a critical path plan. So, we accomplished this work through another round of interviews with users and promoters, more work with city staff, parks and rec staff. I collected a lot of financial information from inside the city to make sure that the financial model we were building is consistent with other sort of markers, staffing levels, salary levels, and so on, what you pay for gas and utilities and things. And then, we did another round of research on comparable projects. That was a very helpful one, and questions that were much more very specific in nature about all of the operating elements of the venue. So, based on our work last time and the work that had been done prior to us getting here, we wanted to sort of reinforce this idea of a setup, operating goals, and priorities. And these are not ranked, per se. I'm sure we may have different sort of opinions about what should be at the top of the list, but I don't want us to get stuck on that. So, contribute to the economic vitality of Clearwater, and more specifically, to the revitalization of downtown. Attract and support during arts and entertainment to the Clearwater region. Make the waterfront the heart of Clearwater. Celebrate the city's authentic history and identity. Provide public access to safe and beautiful natural amenities. Connect to the rest of Clearwater. Generate sufficient revenues to sustain operations. And provide affordable access to well-equipped facilities for the benefit of local arts and facilities. It really is a very tall order from a management perspective to do all that, but let's see if we've built a model that might succeed. Let me say something else about these corporates. So, in this round, we had extensive interviews with six venues: St. Augustine, the Amphitheater in Tallahassee, the Rec Hat in Raleigh, Meisner in Boca, Pompano Beach, and the Ascent, Bessemer Park Amphitheater in Pannono Beach. And we really dug into the minutia around, you know, how does your ticketing system operate? Or how are you in charge of food and beverage? Or how do you sort of put other contractors in place to do that? It really helped us get a good handle on what might work. So, the first thing in these venues is always, how does it come to life? So, what are the types of events and programs you're going to bring? So, we have five principal types of programs. One is presenting, where you are at risk, you are buying product, putting it on, you pay the fees and the marketing and all that to put on the event, you collect the box office proceeds, and you hope that you make a little bit of a margin. Then, there are festivals. So, presenting to me is a one night or one day thing. Festivals are the multi-day events that you already have here, either put on through the city or local organizations as partners. Then, nonprofit rentals, which would include Ruth Eckert as a nonprofit. So, they might rent in order to do presenting, so in that case, you are not at risk. Commercial rentals, so groups like Live Nation and AEG and others coming in as a renter, and we believe according to the charter that that sort of activity is appropriate, that we can rent it out for that. And then, various community events, because we really think it's important that this, the park and the amphitheater, become seen as a community gathering place. So, governance is pretty straightforward because we really, we can't have an outside offering. It can't be kind of a lease arrangement. And the other thing that we've learned and was really reinforced with our research on all of these comparable venues is, don't get into an exclusive relationship with one presenter or promoter. You want to be what they call an open promoter arrangement, where different promoters are able to come and present their work either just as a straight rental or with you as a co-promoter, say where the city might take some risk. Initially, I think it's better if it's rentals, and then you might start to feel more comfortable about being at risk, but maybe not. So, we believe that the city already has some of the skills necessary to operate the facility. You are doing it now in Coachman Park, but there are additional skills and resources required. So, half an hour ago, I had to recreate this slide because all of my fancy lines and things and boxes disappeared. So, it's a little simpler, but the idea is that we're recommending, there are six full-time positions dedicated to the structure. So, the executive director, and then five reports, an operations manager, programming marketing director, a technical director, ticketing and IT manager, and an admin assistant. And then, there are technical staff and ticketing staff reporting to those full-time. And then, essentially, what we've suggested is that the amphitheater executive director is reporting to the parks and recreation direct, given the skill, experience, and compensation level required for that position, and the fact that that person is managing a big operation in a pretty significant step. Now, this, you know, it's a little bit deceptive, you know, there are a lot of other people working on the amphitheater, but, you know, 80% of them are contract event-based step or backstage, front of house, security, cleaning, food, ticketing, are mostly all event-based contract steps. So, there are only these full-time positions. The other thing we'd like to recommend, so this is a city facility, is that you establish an advisory board. Individuals who will help the organization stay on mission, that it will represent the constituents for whom the park has been developed, and that they can act as ambassadors for the project out in the community. So, this group might include folks from the Downtown Development Board, Clearwater Downtown Partnership, the Neighborhoods Coalition, the Regional Chambers, the local arts and culture nonprofits, homeowners associations, and also a local law enforcement liaison. We would also, of course, want to have a City of Clearwater liaison, and we would suggest, just as a starting point, that these are sort of volunteer two-year, volunteer positions with a two-year. I'm sure there will be lots of interest in folks wanting to participate. Now, we get into the sort of the details of sort of day-to-day operations. So, the first struggle is always around who gets first dibs, who gets a crack at the calendar before the operation. We're going to say, start with festivals because they have such a long lead time and they really need to nail things down well in events, then nonprofit rentals, maybe-- So, we put the festivals a year out, nonprofit rentals eight months out, then come other community events, and then come presenting and commercial rentals, six months out. They tend to be, that's generally okay with them because of the nature of their, when things are going on the road and what kind of notice they need. Now, it's never as neat and tidy as that. There's always exceptions and always lots of sort of jockeying for dates on the calendar. You know, a presenter, promoter calls up and says, "I've got an opportunity to bring such and such an artist here, they're coming through Florida." So, there are always exceptions to these rules, but the point is to make sure that it's clear that you recognize in your operating policy that this is a place for everyone to come and use. And then, the other good thing is that once you get through the first year, things will sort of settle down. There will be reoccurring events at the same time and so on. I'll just, a quick tangent, sort of one of my very favorite arts facility managers, her trick was whenever she had to open up the calendar for the next year, she would invite the Broadway gang and the ballet and the opera and the symphony and the opera into a conference room. She would put a blank calendar down on the conference table, and she would say, "All right, you guys work it out, I'm going to be back in two hours, and you have to reserve me about 20 dates for things that I'm, single night things that I'm going to present. Good luck." And it worked, right? Somehow, they managed through whatever process they used to sort of schedule appropriately. So, the cost of access is really important, and here, the key for us is setting rental rates that give some favor and preference to community organizations and nonprofits. And then, commercial events. Now, in our pro forma operating budget, it's just, we've just done the rent at two levels, but really, there will be more versions of that based on the day of the week and the space used, and whether it's a ticketed or a non-ticketed event, and perhaps even on the number of people coming. So, I've already suggested that in terms of presenting and promoting, that we like this idea of an open promoter arrangement. We think that it helps with quality, it ensures community access, it encourages competition, essentially. So, you know, these big commercial venue managers and promoters are locked in an intensely competitive struggle around live entertainment across the country. And they are very keen to, you know, lock up a venue as the first step in locking up a market and towards the idea of exerting monopolistic control. And we've seen this happen a lot around the country where these large organizations come in and attempt to gain control of the market. Now, if you remember your economics one-on-one, you would recall that that's a bad thing because when one organization controls the market, three things happen. One, the price goes up. Two, the supply goes down. And three, the quality goes down. So, the absence of competition is a bad thing and something we want to avoid in the way that you operate the stadium. Food and beverage operations, so I've already said that flexibility is key. We think that it should be extensive for some events, but less so for other events. We recognize the importance of supporting downtown restaurants and food and beverage establishments, and we want you to be flexible in the way that you respond to that. Some events would really, you would want to have as much food and beverage as you can, other events, much less. So, you have to have the ability to scale up and down. And the other thing I'd like to say is the food and beverage is important from a revenue-generating perspective, but it's potentially even more important in terms of how it affects the customer experience. So, you really want to give people a great experience as customers, and you really need the food and beverage people you work with to be totally focused on customer service and customer satisfaction in order that you build support for the park over the long term. Ticketing. So, you currently use eTix for community events. You've also looked at Ticketmaster and other products from Live Nation and AEG. We would suggest that when the time comes, you issue an RFP for ticketing services. It's a competitive way to put the right product in place. And, you know, the world of ticketing is changing profoundly. From, probably in a span of 15 years, it's gone from a hardware business to a software business to a licensing business to a cloud-based something like that. And there's these waves of new companies and consolidations, and so you really have to stay up with that. Technical labor, we really, we would stress the importance of building the labor pool necessary to run events in the park. And backstage for audio and video, for lighting, sound, projections. We would suggest, in this case, probably your closest best partner is probably Ruth Eckert-Hall, and we would encourage the idea of potentially working with them on accessing and contracting training staff in order to support your venues. So, safety and security is a huge issue in our world these days. We have to have policies that prohibit items and motivate good behavior. Various facilities have, around Florida, have other varying ways of managing firearms. It seems to be the most common one is they are able to suggest that the person running the event, either as a renter or as a promoter, it's their rules that apply. If their rules prohibit firearms, then that becomes the way that the venue prohibits firearms. Other venues don't seem to be able to do that, and they're still struggling with the question of managing guns coming into the venue. So, I think with your council and others, it's going to be an important exercise to try and sort out a way that you can manage this in order that will convince these larger promoters that their artists will be safe coming to the venue here. Noise and time. So, because of the way things are working now, you've already put some attention out of this. We were surprised at how much energy facility managers around the country put into making sure that they're getting along with their neighborhoods, both in terms of the noise level and curfew times for events. In the time of social media, you know, when something bad happens or something that people don't like, it's, you know, it's a storm of communications that lands in a half a second. And you have to be ready for that, but the better thing is to have the policies in place that sort of minimize complaints. There was one project we were looking at recently in the Ascent Amphitheater. They have these fancy, the sound meters that they're running around with during the events and monitoring sound levels so that they can very quickly sort of resolve a problem. And their situation as a result of that, apparently, they reduced neighborhood complaints by, you know, a factor of two or three. All right, now, onto the pro forma operating budget. So, I built this with the help of city staff and trying to understand the way that you do budgeting and cost levels and revenue levels here. It's also informed by some of these comparable projects. Not all of these venues were prepared to share their financials with us, but we got some information on a confidential basis and other information that was public. Our theory of building these pro forma operating budgets is that it's all about activity. So, if you figure out who's going to use it and how often and sort of focus on that, then you can get to the question of revenue, and then you can get to expenses. This pro forma is particularly complicated because there's four different types of events, and we've suggested five different configurations for the amphitheater. Now, there are probably, there are multiple configurations, but in order not to lose our minds trying to figure it out, what we decided was we would look at five configurations. So, first is the festival configuration, so there's no seating, it's just 15,000 people in a big open space, you've got food and beverage and all the other things happening. You have a big, single event, so the total capacity is 15, and then of that, you have 3,000 seated, and they are also undercover. For a small event, we decided to try something different. We were doing a total capacity of 5,000, and there, we're covering 3,000, but not seating, if you want, just to see what that looks like. The fourth configuration is a total capacity of 3,000, but it's all seated and all covered. So, it's essentially, this is our, you know, audience that looks like me. Who wants a seat, wants to be covered, you know, for the symphony or something, so there's no lawn behind that. And then, the run-ride type events where it's just about the stage and sort of entertainment on the stage, but people are coming through with bikes and dogs and runs and things. So, we then, so we did all, there's 20 different little exercises then that say, what happens when you have a free event in that configuration, or a nonprofit rental, a commercial rental, or a presented event? So, I'm just going to show you one example of that. So, this is when the city presents a festival. So, we're saying, in year one, you're going to do two festivals. They average two days each, and there's another four days of preparation for each, so it's eight days of prep, so it's total 12 days of use associated with two festivals. We project a conservative attendance of 50% of capacity, so that means 7,500 people a day, or 30,000 for the third. We set a ticket price of $30 for the two-day event. We stand up ticket sales of $900,000. Then, what we're proposing is there's a, we're going to sell some extra goodies for sort of a VIP experience, whether that's a separate little area where they can stand, or, you know, a glass of wine, or some extra food, or some, you know, goodies that we can offer them. So, they, we're going to say that 10% of our audience goes for that, and they pay $25 a person to do that, so that generates another 75 grand. Then, we have sponsorship of $7,500 for each event day, so that's another 30 grand. Our ticketing fees, so whenever somebody buys a ticket, you know there are the ticketing fees on top of that. This is a pretty conservative number relative to what you have to pay with a lot of commercial events, $250 a day. And then, the food and beverage number, this is, we're going all out on food and beverage for our festivals, so we're projecting, the per capita expenditure is $25, so that's $750,000. So, we add up all those revenues, it's $1.8 billion for those festivals. Then, over on the right side, we have our expenses. So, the average town cost per day is $150,000, so we're paying for town $600,000. $40,000 per day of event day of marketing, so that's $160,000. Production costs of $25,000 a day. Event management costs, which includes security, all the sort of front of house stuff, is another $50,000 a day, so that's $200,000. The cost of our VIP services is $10 per capita, so we're charging 25, we're paying 10, so we've got that $15 margin based on space. And then, our average food and beverage cost is 2/3 of the revenue, so our margin is 1/3. And we add it all up, and those expenses are $1.79 million, so our net from presenting those two festivals is 40 grand. So, there's 20 of these little exercises in this spreadsheet, and, you know, you own this now, and Micah has helped me a lot build this, so you can now use it to develop other configurations and test various changes in the physical plan, or if you think the ticket prices are too high or too low and so on. So, it becomes a model that you can now use. Couple of summary pieces from it. So, what we're saying is that there are, in year one, there are 42 event days, so a day where something is going on, and 124 use days, that's adding all the loading in and out and all that stuff. And that grows to 46, so I'm being very conservative in this five-year span. The rental attendance is 93,000, growing to 102, the presenting attendance is 58,000, growing to 70, so the total attendance, the total number of people who enter an event in the year one is 152,000, and grows to 170,000. So, this is the financial summary. So, on the income side, there are only two numbers because I've been through that exercise. In every kind of event, we did all the gross revenues and expenses in order to achieve a net. So, there's two income lines, and there's one is a net from presenting, and one is a net from renters, right? And that gets you $900,000 in year one and $1.4 million in year five. Against that, we have our full-time staff, our part-time staff, our event staff, then we have box office expenses, administrative costs, occupancy costs. I've done occupancy costs based, relative to a lot of existing city facilities and also other amphitheaters. A city chargeback, we figured some ways to, that we can sort of plug into city elements to get some of the services we need in order to get our total operating expenses. The bottom line for you all is, the building, in the year before it opens, you have to spend a bunch of money and you don't get anything back, so there's $480,000 of annual funding required. But by the fifth year of operation, you are generating an operating surplus. So, in year one, it's 340, you're down, 219, 120, 41, and then you're in the black at $21,000 in year five. So, I think that's a, first of all, I believe the numbers are conservative. I don't think they're pushing hard on anything, and I think that's also a good realistic expectation on your part to get it to that level of operating surplus by year five. So, you know, these, I'm making, you know, 1,000 assumptions in these, to build these budgets. The big risks really, in this case, are really about whether or not the activity comes, whether or not, you know, that people come and rent, both to put on their own events-- or not, you know, that people come and rent, both to put on their own events, or the Live Nation, AEG, Ruth Eckerhall come to rent in order to be presenters. That's the big risk, that the activity just doesn't happen. So just to test the downside, I ran another version of the model where we knock off half of all the rental business, and that includes the rental and the presenting business. And in that worst-case scenario where we haven't reduced staff by anything, the annual funding requirement grows by 500,000 dollars. Let me also say something about the number, the level of activity we're projecting. The current venue in the park supports 27 event days. We are projecting 42. So the increment associated with having this new facility, I think, is quite reasonable and should be achievable. Finally, I've done a little critical path plan that suggests how you now move down three parallel tracks in order to achieve, what I've heard is a desire to have the park open in the second quarter of 2021. In any event, if you're doing that, there's work to be done soon on fundraising and I think the idea that potentially you could raise some funding from the private sector to support the project is totally reasonable and worth exploring. Then I've checked with the design team and they are theoretically sort of okay if they're sort of into programming and costing in this second quarter of the year, heading into schematic design, design development, contract documents, bid, construction and commissioning. It's a little tight, but theoretically achievable. And then from my perspective, it's important to start to keep up planning for operations, all the things you have to do around putting staff in place and policy and contracting for ticketing systems and figuring out food and beverage operations and all of that. So I'll just finish with, I'd like to quote the fellow that taught me how to do this work 30 years ago, he used to say two things to me. First thing he said was, Duncan, it takes a long time for something to happen suddenly. And that's in reference to these projects, because very often, they bump along for a long time and everyone gets very frustrated at how slow it is and cumbersome. But the fact is that at the magic moment, they happen very quickly. So, and the second thing he said, which is related to the first, he said, Duncan, we may work in the arts, but it's all about politics and economics. So the thing that makes these projects finally take off, when they do, is when we can line up the community argument and the creative argument with the political argument and economic argument for these venues. Thank you.
Any questions? Do you want to take some questions now, or do you want to?
Yep.
Any questions? Mr. Albert?
Well, you might have covered this, but as you were talking, I was trying to make notes. And I don't know, maybe this is a question for the city attorney, but is there, it might be covered under fundraising, but naming rights, selling bricks, things like that, I mean, is something we can do to offset some of the costs?
Does the city have a foundation already? Do you have a fundraising deal? Not hard to set up.
Real quick, early question. Were we not going to discuss rooftops during this?
Yes.
Oh, okay. This is the, this one.
So my assumption in the operating model is that there is roofing, and seating that comes and goes, but I am not assuming that we have any kind of super fancy automated system where the seating disappears and re-creeps. So I'm putting in the full labor costs associated with changeovers the way you have to do them now. So it'd be great if we could get a system that makes the changeover easier, but the model is not based on that.
Let me go around first. Okay. Mr. Hamilton?
You talked very heavily about food and beverage being a big driver on this economically. When we do events in our park now, it's all brought in outside. Are you talking about incorporating quote-unquote concession stands that the city would operate, or is it still bringing in the outside operators and just contracting so that we get a little something out of the?
It is based on contracting. I'm nervous about the city going into the business of running concessions, but it's going to be hard work because you really have to find a good set of food and beverage providers that can consistently deliver high-quality product. So it's not going to be easy, but I think it's a better option.
Mr. Kandam?
To back on, right at the opening of your presentation, and thank you, by the way, for all of your work, I really do appreciate it. It's thorough, it's smart and a lot of thought has gone into it. One of my questions was your idea that we could do with less seating rather than more seating. One of the things that we talked about on ones is what is the economic, is there an economic benefit of 4,000 instead of 3,000 or 5,000 instead of 4, 3? Why do you think it could go down to 25?
Yeah, my position is I think you will still attract the same high-quality product you want, but not necessarily having to have 4,000 seats undercover, seated undercover for a couple of reasons. One, I think the total capacity number is more important than the seating capacity. I think the idea of having 15,000 people able to come to events and not be seated is terrific and I think it also reflects the future. I think a lot of younger people are less interested in our fixed seating events and more interested in things where they're kind of roaming around. Also, we've seen a lot of other, there are other venues in Florida that are very successful that don't have that large, larger seating capacity number. But I also recognize that, you know, you're at the beginning of a process and I'm sure there will be lots of pressure, lots of people saying, oh, you know, we really, gosh, we really need more seats and more seats. So that's a valid position because for those, for the outside promoters wanting to come in, they will make more money with more seats. But I'm not sure that you necessarily make a lot more money. And two, you're paying the capital cost to build this. And three, the more seats you build and the more structure you build, the harder it is for you to return to a park-like setting when the space is not in use of the neighborhood. So, you know, this is going to be the hot button issue as the project continues to move forward. I put, you know, my argument out and you will hear others.
You mentioned AEG and AEG thinks that 4,000 is a better number than 3,000, as well as Ruth Eckerhall.
They'll make more money.
But if they can't attract...
Let's start the debate with him, okay?
No, I'm just trying to get his perspective on it.
He's given it.
All right.
He's given it. Let me ask about the staff. Are they going to be city employees then, or part of this X?
No, those are city employees.
Okay, so they would be in addition to what we have now?
Yeah. But they're all, I built them into the budget, so they're all in the pro forma budget.
Okay, so they would be paid from the proceeds?
Yep.
Okay, all right. And then let me try to, I think we all had that same, you know, conversation with some other promoters saying that you need more than what you're suggesting. Let me ask you from a different perspective and I think this is where we're getting to, and that is the competition in the area. What would be the, you know, from your perspective, you know, why are you thinking that a smaller venue then competes with an indoor facility that is a smaller venue and we then would be about the same size? How does that play with these other examples that you've given us?
And number one, I think it's more important to think about total capacity rather than seating capacity. So I think the 15,000 number is a more important number than the 3,000. Secondly, I believe in looking at all the amphitheaters we've seen around the country, that the product is still going to come if you're at 3,000 seats or even if you're at 2,500 plus, 12,500, I don't think you're going to lose product. And three, this will be a lot more of a real conversation when the design team starts to talk to you about what it costs and what the additional seats cost from a capital.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, if there were 4,000 seats, what would the total capacity be? Would that go down then?
Yeah.
Is that the point you made?
Well, yeah, pretty much.
So what would the total capacity go down to then?
Well, I think the total capacity would still be 15,000.
Still 15,000. Okay, let me go back to Mr. Wilton Ballman saying...
I didn't get a shot yet.
Yes, you did.
Oh, I did. I asked one question earlier. I said, why is...
Okay.
You're right.
Mr. Tom?
I apologize about jumping around, but I think you've answered it about the seating and the more I've thought about this and even going to, you know, Spring training Phillies games, I see everybody in the stadium and then I see a lot of people out on the green and I think, and the more I thought about it, you're still going to have 15,000, space for 15,000 people, so 3,000 seats isn't enough for, you say, hey, I've got all this other area behind it, people can put blankets or whatever, I'm fine with that. Well, let me ask you about restrooms. I know you're not part of the design, architecture thing, but how do these other facilities, because we certainly don't want to build restrooms for 15,000 people because the maintenance on that would be terrible. So what do you recommend for, that we should have in the park for restrooms?
So the design team will sort of figure out a mix between permanent and temporary. So as the saying, if you don't build the church for Easter Sunday, you have to have enough permanent restrooms to manage most events, but then you're able to add restrooms for Easter Sunday.
Okay. And your pro forma here with going out five years, did you figure any costs for like, not depreciation, but, well, I guess like what would happen as the years go out that we need to repair to things?
I have not put a capital reserve.
Nothing on the capital side?
But the point, to me, the point is that in the fifth year, you're starting to generate a surplus that becomes a capital reserve, becomes your first contribution.
Yes.
Into debt.
Okay, and then the only comment that I have, well, it's a question, I'll make it a question. The seating thing has always bothered me because I've always envisioned in my head these connector seats that would just pop up, five seats at a time, we store, and then I started thinking about, where are we going to store all that stuff? And nobody could tell me, I didn't want to have to invent the wheel, but nobody could show me anything that people are using like that. So you're figuring just a regular, like we have now, fold seat that can be flattened out, that we just have a crew come in and set up and take down?
I feel very fortunate, I'm going to be followed now by Daryl and Chris, who are going to address the seating issue in great detail as well as the...
Okay, thank you.
That's it. Not yet. Not the seating thing yet, okay, because that, right, we're not having this. Thank you.
Mr. Pogly.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate all the work, I feel that there were some issues that really weren't answered and I'm going to present some of these questions to you. I am 100% absolutely opposed to the 3,000-seat capacity, I'm going to tell you why. You talk about the total capacity being 15,000 and that that's really what we should be focusing on, yet the current market trend suggests that first of all, there is an absence, there's a hole in these boutique facilities that will handle the 7,500, I'll give you for instance, the 15,000, that works for multi-day festivals and oftentimes when you look at the reported attendance, even with our festivals, even Jazz Holiday, you're right, total seating capacity, we haven't had a sell-out crowd of 15,000, 16,000 since Kenny G. So total capacity, 15,000, maybe just fine. But what in fact currently the market is demanding, where there's a big hole and not being fulfilled, are these boutique concerts, the John Legend's, the Cougar Melon camps, and then if you cross genres into the millennial, the Gen X's, they're all going to be that intimate-type boutique set where you have, you're going to sell 7,500 tickets. So the whole 15,000-seat capacity doesn't look matter. What does matter is what our weather circumstances are here. And in Florida, nine, 10 months out of the year, it is 87, 110% humidity, more likely 90, 92. So the more covered seating, the more we'll be able to facilitate all of these events, not just the presenter, the nonprofits, but all of the community engagement, all of the conferences, all of the high school graduations. I promise you, there is no venue, we won't be putting our stage on Spectrum Fields anymore, we will be using this park. So, and one of the things that I don't necessarily take issue to, but I just want to clarify in my mind and so that the community can hear me, is that you talk about this park, this waterfront becoming the heart of Clearwater. Yet you were hired to look at, you were consulted for the amphitheater and its surrounding grass areas. I would suggest that the heart of downtown Clearwater is the entire 66-acre project, not just the amphitheater. So 3,000 to me does not fill that void in the market and we've heard it from, and profitability, I think, also is going to make a difference because, yeah, there's going to be the rental fee, but there's also a percentage of the ticket fee. So the more VIP tickets you sell, the more money we'll make there. So I think these are valid points and we don't, I've heard it over and over, not just from Ruth Eckerhall, AEGOM, Live Nation, but attendees, is that it is about the experience and if we don't build it, either Jeff Vinick or Bill Edwards is going to do it in St. Pete. And so I worry about going too small and not being relevant into the future. So the 3,000 is not the right number. I was really hoping that we would come back with data.
Mr. Pogly, let's skip...
The argument on the part of the promoters is compelling, the threat that somebody else is going to do it is nerve-wracking, but I'm just going to stand by my experience of venues that actually get built and operated that I think, I would rather you were in a position of being a little bit underbuilt and selling out events and having a reasonable capital cost rather than you were overbuilt and hoping for more bigger.
Final question to segue.
All right, council, let me remind us that our purpose here is to get information, okay? And we have an expert here, you know, who's given us, you know, let's focus on those things and not our own personal opinions and what we would like so that we can benefit each other.
Okay, agree, then I have one more question for you. How would you assess or explain that St. Augustine just added another 700 covered seats for their venue because of the demand? And did they just build it too small to begin with, or?
They've got a great model, they've got a very sort of tight, steeply wrecked venue that isn't really possible where we are. And they made, you know, certain choices about how they're going to program it and operate it. That they are the, you know, in all the venues we looked at, they are the sort of aberration in terms of profitability. I think the thing that they do better than anything else is the food and beverage. So the more seats are, to my mind, are really about driving more food and beverage operations. So I think you can, I think you can approach that level of, you can do well financially in the structure if you pay good attention to food and beverage, but in your case, you also have to respect the desire to take care of downtown Clearwater. So it's a little bit, it's going to be a little bit trickier here to do what they're doing there in many respects. You don't have the slope, you've got downtown to do well.
Any other questions from this side? Any other questions from this side?
I don't know if it's necessarily a question, but I'm going to try and form it as one. I think we're getting hung up on the, you know, the number right now. But, I mean, when you talk about covered seats, once the sun goes down, I don't care if it's covered or not, we're talking about, you know, how many of our events take, how many of our events take care, take course, you know, or take...
Place.
Take place in the middle of the day, at the heat of the day. It's, you know, and when we're talking about covered seats, that's what they are, covered seats. You know, we're fortunate here to have the kind of weather that we don't lose a lot of things to the weather, precipitation, but, you know, that's a chance everybody takes around here. We live with that. You know, and 3,000 undercover, could I be convinced to go a few more? Probably. However, that doesn't preclude us from putting more seats behind those seats. They're not covered. All right, you're covered seats, you're going to draw a higher ticket price. So, you know, it's still a matter of, because no matter who the entertainment is, we've got a big old piece of property there that whether people buy a ticket or not, you're going to kind of, you're going to have some people that might be hanging around the perimeter of the park, that are going to get the enjoyment of the event without buying a ticket. So it's a matter of programming the kind of entertainment that people want to be there for and are willing to pay the price of admission for that. That's, I'm trying to keep that frame of mind, rather than getting caught up in one number versus another, because we've got a lot of work to do before we get to that.
And I'm not sure I heard a question, but over 10 like I did.
I appreciate that.
Mr. Condam.
I have a question about the rake. Should I wait until the next discussion?
No, go ahead.
Were you given a certain percentage of rake to work with, or could there be a better rake for that space?
I better leave that. The, what I was working with in building the business model was a rake that allows the site to work as a park when it's not in use as an entity. Meaning, the slope is gentle enough that people can be there doing other things when they're not at an event. It's not so steep as St. Augustine that began. It could only be one thing.
Can we talk a little bit about the number of events and how long the park area would not be a park area because of the setup time?
Right.
You indicated that it would be an additional 15 events from '27 to '42.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, I wasn't sure I understood how many extra days that would take the park out of...
It's on slide 23. I'm caught up now. So the use days, essentially days, days when it can't be.
So for every day that we have an event, it would be at least two days that it would, not, two additional days that it would not be?
Yeah, it's different for the event types.
Yeah, yeah, but roughly. Under, currently, what hap, do you know what happens, or do I have to ask staff?
As far as days closed?
Yes.
Ask Chris to come up.
Just while he's doing that, one of the reasons that we built the rake based on the 2%, as we discussed in February, was, and it's not exactly 2%, it's around 2%, was because of the effect of the retaining wall at the back end of the grain. Early design showed at a steeper, steeper rake, a much higher retaining wall, something around 10 feet. So that was the reason we designed it a little flatter as well.
Are we planning to go up to below the bluff walk? Is that what?
We have a visual. We'll...
So are the different types, that he mentioned, five different types of events, there's different setup amount of times depending on the event. So a run would be like a one day, a Jazz Holiday would be about a week currently. So I think an average of probably about three, three days.
And that's, but what I'm asking now is, currently, we have how many events at the park? 27?
27. I'd say probably an average would be three days, the park is down, for that 27.
An additional three days for each event. So that's 27 times three is 81?
Yeah.
81, and 27 is 108?
And right now being...
Wait, 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 don't confuse me. Okay, so we're at 108. Roughly 108 days that the park is closed off in effect now.
Right.
Under the plan that you're suggesting, it would be 166 days?
124.
Plus the 42.
No, no, that's total. 124 is the total days used.
Oh, the 42 is included in the 124?
Yeah, yeah.
So go back then to us. Is, it's the 27 plus three days plus 81?
Mm-hmm.
So...
I think it would be reasonable to expect that the turnover is going to be more efficient in the new, even without any fancy automated stuff, because certain things are going to be fixed and permanent, whereas now, nothing is.
Okay. Hey, that's what I'm trying to get, so that the public will understand, even though we're increasing the number of different events there, it doesn't go up substantially.
Exactly. I mean, it might even, it might even go down, the number of days that it's not available.
Okay.
So that's important for the public.
I think one of the other important, even as important and more important points is, right now in Coachman Park, when there's an event going on in Coachman Park, Coachman Park is closed, and the only thing else down there is a concrete parking lot. When this is done, even when there's an event going on, we're not going to be shutting down the other areas of the park. There's going to be other areas for people to come to. This is just strictly the event.
Event.
That location. I mean, there's going to be a lot more to do, and it's not going to prohibit the use of the other areas. So here, Chris said it.
Just, I think from the public's perspective, we're very seasonal right now as well, where we do most of our events either in the spring or in the fall because of the cost of setting things up. If there's infrastructure there, you know, hopefully we'd be able to spread that impact out farther, where right now, there are certain months of the year where it's closed for events.
For a long period of time. Okay. Again, on behalf of all of us, thank you for that work, but hang around.
All right. Now, I'll ask Daryl to come up.
Okay, good afternoon. Daryl LeBlanc, architect with Santec. Last time we were here, we were talking about retractable roof systems and some alternatives that we might be able to bring to this project. So we're going to talk about some of the systems that are out there and what might be applicable to this project specifically. So essentially, there are three different types of retractable roof systems. There are fabric types, there are solid types, which could be polycarbonate, could be glass, could be metal, but it's solid roof. And then there, and those are essentially available in off-the-shelf type of configurations. Then there are custom systems, which could be virtually anything you can think of. So those are the three basic types that we're looking at now. And let's see. Okay, so as far as the first type is concerned, the fabric types. You probably have seen some of these before, and things like outdoor dining terraces and things like that. They're intended to cover relatively small sections, something in the neighborhood of an 18 by 24-foot space. The image that's shown here has multiple sections grouped together, so it can effectively cover a larger area. One of the things that's important to note here is that the image on the left is showing it employed, the image on the right is showing it in its retracted version. There's still a fair amount of structure that's required to stay permanently in place in order for that system to actually work. So the structure doesn't go away, the retractable surface does. Some of the other things to consider with this type is that if you look at the seams where that fabric runs along the guides, they're not exactly waterproof. So if it is raining, some of these systems don't provide 100% coverage. Some do, but not all of them. The second type of system is a solid type. You can see an image on the bottom right, that peaked roof section is the operable section. And what happens is those center panels that meet at the top of that ridge actually slide down and cover the lower sections. And those are, these happen to be polycarbonate in this case. They're about 10 feet wide each, and they just have an array of them, so it can cover as much space as you want. It is obviously a better system when it comes to having better protection from rain, but there are limitations. Again, there is structure. When you look at the image on the bottom left, that structure, those trusses are in place because it's supporting not only the sections that move, but the sections that they stack on top of. So again, it's important to note that the structure doesn't go away, but the roof panel that covers it does. And then, of course, the third system is the custom system. And that's anything that you could imagine, and they come in both large and small sizes, but you see them most typically in a larger size. This is the Arthur Ashe Stadium where they play the US Open. You can see that center section, it kind of splits apart in the middle. And the entire section in the center then becomes open just by virtue of the way that the structure's configured. And it is obviously quite a bit larger than a tennis court, so you could imagine the size that that might take in this particular project. There are other systems, such as this one, that do allow the entire structure, in addition to the canopy system, to be retracted, but they require guides, they require rails, they require something for that structure to slide along that's fixed in place. In our particular project, chances are that system would be on the ground if the structure itself wanted to move as well as the retractable canopy part of it. So the point is that there's infrastructure that is in place that doesn't all vanish and go away. In this particular type, this is a football stadium up in Vancouver, the center section moves. To give an idea of size, this is about one and a half times the size of the covered area that we're talking about for Clearwater. So that center section that operates isn't too far off from the scale that we're talking about here. This project, we saw last time when Duncan was looking at different comparables, this is that festival space in Austria, and these canopy systems kind of collapse toward the center. And it shows it employed and then in the non-employed sort of version of that, non-deployed. And you can see the cables and the structure that requires, that is required to maintain its operable characteristics are in place all the time. So what you see on the right is what it looks like when there's not an event. So that system is there, and there are other ways of doing this, obviously, but the point I'm trying to illustrate is that the system and the structure stays, and there's always something there. And then the last two projects I wanted to show, the one on the left is a custom version of that retractable canopy system that is on those curved beams. This is a bar, a rooftop bar at a hotel in San Francisco. And those pleated sections just go off to the side, and there are multiple, I think there's eight of them in a row here, so it covers an entire roof. The image on the right-hand side is an amphitheater in West Virginia. It's a little hard to tell here. I don't know if you can see the cursor. This section here on the bottom goes up and down along that curved beam. So that can retract underneath the other canopy that stays fixed, or it can go down. They need it for shading primarily for the seating section that's in the amphitheater itself. So some considerations to keep in mind when we're thinking about retractable systems. What we're looking at here, just based on the size and the scale of it, has put us into the category of being custom. We've looked at alternatives where we can keep a modular shape, but they all exceed the size that any system that's currently manufactured affords. So anything that we're talking about is a custom system. And the maintenance associated with this is greater than it would be with an actual roof. The maintenance that we would have on a fixed roof for the canopy would be very similar to what you'd expect for a roof of any building. There's cleaning, things like that that you'd have to think about. When it comes to a retractable system, there's all of the mechanics that make it retractable that you have to maintain. There's the guides, there's the motors, there's all the functioning parts that you have to make sure are operating when you want it to operate. So depending on the frequency with which you're using it, it would depend on how much you're actually going to have to maintain it in between, just to make sure it runs when you want it to run. And as far as the costs, the costs unfortunately are extremely variable based on the system that's chosen. We've been hearing from different manufacturers that we've talked to and from our cost estimator, that a large chunk of the cost that you're going to have for this canopy is actually the structure itself that's supporting it, whether it's retractable or not. The increase to a retractable system could be anywhere from about 15 to 50% more than the structure that you need just to provide the place for the retractable systems to move. Does that make sense then? Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Mr. Albrecht.
So some of the pictures you showed us are in other parts of the United States, but seeing how we're right here in the hurricane alley, I'm sure that would contribute to the cost too, for something, even the structure. Like, I can see going with some kind of fabric, but that's the part that doesn't worry me, is the structure on that would have to be...
Absolutely. I mean, we're in an area where there are wind speeds that are greater than they would be in Vancouver, for instance. But all the manufacturers are familiar with that. They have systems in place here. It's the fact of doing business. So all the systems that we would be proposing would be suitable for this location, without a doubt.
What about the maintenance? Just the, like, the tracks and everything, are there, is there a lot of maintenance to that, to keeping them where they work back and forth?
Yes. And that's what I was suggesting before. If you're in a situation where you're actually using it a lot, and there's probably, in some cases, less maintenance than if it were to stay fixed in one position for a long period of time. But there are rails, there are bearings, there are wheels, there are things that have to be lubricated and oiled and ordered to work, and you do have to expect some sort of maintenance associated with that. There are some systems, some of the fabric systems, they're pulled by cables, they're retracted. And in other systems, they have motors that actually move it. So it depends on the weight of the system, whether it's a solid or a fabric system. But there's no question, there's increased maintenance because the parts are moving. And you have to make sure that there, there's no debris, there's nothing that's, no bird has gotten up on a rail and, you know, created a nest there if it hasn't been deployed for a week or two. So you do need to maintain it.
Mr. Maxwell.
It's just, I just checked with Duncan. He did build in maintenance costs into his pro forma, just so you're aware. That pro forma that he had did include retractable roof maintenance costs, or a nestment of them at very least.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I had one that just left me.
Okay, well...
When I was listening to...
It'll come back. We'll give you a second chance.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Pogly.
Thank you. So to me, it was pretty scary, is the 15 to 50% range.
Exact.
My question then would be, of those that we saw, which ones are the most expensive? Which would be the 50% increase?
So the ones like the Arthur Ashe Stadium, as an example, is probably among the more expensive because that entire center section goes away. So the sections are much larger, the mechanics are much bigger, the motors are much bigger, everything is bigger associated with that system. One of the things that we're looking at here would be to try to refine things in a way where the sections are smaller, there's more of them and they're smaller, and hopefully keep things a little bit more cost-effective. But we have had a number of conversations with different manufacturers that are anxious to get into more design and more refinement. That's why they're hesitant in giving us an exact number, because we haven't really fully developed that system. And I agree that 15 to 50% is a pretty big range. And my guess, based on the overall square footage and size that we're talking about, it doesn't seem like it compares really with some of the stadiums that we see. But the reality is, it's a big area. It's about 38,000 square feet of roof canopy that we're talking about. And if that section or that area is all going to be retractable, that's a big surface. And if that section or that area is all going to be retractable, that's a big surface area.
I have a question, Hunter Duncan, if I may do a follow-up. On the community program events, which makes up a pretty substantial portion on the amphitheater, would I be correct to assume that most of the community program events would be during the day? I'm trying to see, the majority of the events, would they require open sunshine? Or the majority of events, would they require covered seating, covered area?
I think in virtually all of our events, we have given, there's the option to have the covered area seated or not.
I just, I've been out there for a length of lectures, and so we tried to do exercise, and I'm thinking of yoga, and some of the pictures that you showed us. At night club in the morning in the summer, it's not nice. Roofing would be, so I'm just trying to get a feel, when we would, can we justify the additional expense of retractable roofing if we're going to be using the space covered most of the time?
Yeah, I just, you know, Darryl was able to give me some numbers just before this meeting on an option that he's been working on. I don't have a visual for that today, but we can certainly have it Thursday and before Thursday with, you know, any one-on-ones. The estimated costs he received, that he provided me just before the meeting, were a range of nine point six to eleven point three million for the structural canopy. So the in-place structured canopy.
What was that again, please?
And a, I'm sorry, it's nine point six million to eleven point three million.
For fixed.
For the fixed. And the retractable option would add another six hundred thousand to one point five million. So that version is on the lower side of that. We'll give you the, you know, the visual of that so you can, you can see it, but I just wanted to give you a sense that it isn't necessarily going to always end up on a higher fifty percent level.
What do you have to do?
No, we're playing around.
One comment I'd like to make was, when the council talked about increased programming, the staff tried to imagine, well, what does that really translate itself into? Because there are times of the year we don't have programming. We don't have programming because of the weather, and because of how the crowd has responded to those hot, humid, that hot, humid timeframe. The canopy served as, in our minds, for a while there, to be the aspect that makes those summertime events occur. And so, you know, I think, well, I think that's the, that's kind of been the issue. What's driving, what's driving the canopy? What's driving the canopy has been, and you all correct me if I'm wrong, staff correct me if I'm wrong, has been the desire to utilize the park year-round. As opposed to the typical seasonal timeframes that we have used. I think it would be rather difficult, even during those seasonal times, to ramp up to the kind of programming that we kept hearing you say. Because remember, you all remember those conversations, it ranged anywhere from having something there every night to, you know, certainly an increment higher than what we're currently doing now, so.
Well, I think since I said it before, Bill, I would suggest that that's only one driver for the covered roofing, retractable or permanent. The rest of the drivers are to make it enjoyable destination for whether it's a nonprofit or presenting for whoever's doing it, and to increase ticket sales, and to increase or decrease risk of providing these events. So it's not just to make it a twelve-year-round park and a much better community asset that can be utilized all year long, but to be more of an enticement for greater programming, better artists, more popular artists, all the different genres to come to that park. I think covered seating isn't as important.
But I was just referring to the conversations we were hearing at that time, so that wasn't necessarily the argument that was being made.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it's not the only driver. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Hamilton.
Well, I guess, again, I don't know if I'm going to be able to get a question here, but I'm just telling you from experience, cloth awnings or, you know, fabric awnings, we've got those on the patio at the Palm Pavilion. And in about two months, we're going to be in the process of taking them out and putting a permanent roof in. Because while they look great, and they're wonderful when they're new, and they have a little bit of water repellent property, over time, the Florida sun takes that water repellent property away. And are we trying to create, you know, or do we want these covered seats? Do we want the covered seating to be a dry place in inclement weather? I would, I would say yes. So I think we're looking, I think personally, we're looking at a permanent roof, or if you want to talk retractable, it's got to be a hard surface that's going to be probably more expensive. But I can also tell you that, now, it's a little more severe out on the beach itself because of the sand, but the salt air wreaks havoc on mechanics. And we are a high-salt air environment. So, you know, from a, from a cost standpoint and maintenance standpoint, a fixed, permanent roof, I think, is going to be our best bet. And that also provides an area of shade when there's nothing going on. And in the summer, people can be down there, they can be in the shade and get out of it, you know, up underneath it. So I think that's, for me, my vote would be for a fixed, permanent roof of some sort. But, because, I mean, those pictures are wonderful and they're great things, but there's so many other things in play, and I can tell you, we've, you know, we spent a lot of money putting those retractable awnings in at the Palm Pavilion, and they've been great most of the time, but when it does rain, well, in a high-wind situation, they have to be retracted because they won't do it. And if it rains, everybody that's sitting down on that patio has to pick up their dinner plate and run inside because it's not waterproof. So it is, you know, that's, I probably got a nickel's worth, not two cents in there.
Mr. Cundas.
I'm looking at the space that's left after, the green, I guess we call it the green, that's not seated, that's standing or on blankets. It seems to me that's at least a football field to, one and a half or two football fields. Am I right in thinking that it might not be necessary to have a retractable roof on the area just in front of the stage? When, and I may be wrong on that, but it seems to me that a fixed roof would, and I don't know if you, what your personal opinion is on it, I know we've been talking about retractable roofs, but with the additional cost, the additional risk of, in operation of it, do you think the risk is too great to make it retractable? And is there enough green space that we don't need to worry about?
So I guess my opinion on that would be, there is a lot of park space around, there's no question about it. I think that with regards to it being retractable or not, I think we would probably, if we could, have an opportunity to study both systems with a fixed shape and say, what does it really look like with an actual manufacturer, to give us some real costs and some real ideas about what are the mechanics, what sort of systems are there that you would need to maintain? What parts might be needing to be replaced every year, maybe five years or something? I don't have the answers right now. But I think that if we were to develop this idea further, we could look at an alternative that says, in this particular plan, that's the shape. We can design it as though it were fixed, we can design it as though it were retractable, but right now, we don't have enough real detailed information to say to you, it's going to fail because it has this type of mechanism or not. I just don't know. But I think that we can study that in future steps. But I do agree with your, with your assessment that there is a lot of park around it. And I think, given the fact that whether it's retractable or not, there's structure that's required to support this, so there's a portion of that that's going to feel a little different than the rest of the lawn that doesn't have that same structure. Can you still use it? Of course you can. Whether it's covered or not, you can still use it. It'll just be a little different, but I don't know that that's necessarily a bad thing.
Can we go back to your, I think it was the last slide on the retractable that looked like it had like a, no.
A spot?
Another, no, that was early, after the Arthur Ashe one.
Those were the two after?
No, all right, well then, no. No. Thought you showed us another one. All right, well, let's, let's use this one, because that's as close as, I guess, I thought there was another one there. Help us understand, how much space are we talking about on that one?
So each one of these sections, even though they're pie-shaped, they're covering an average of about eighteen feet by twenty-four feet.
Yeah, yeah, you said that, I meant in terms of how many seats would something like that cover?
We're looking at, so this would be...
Four hundred and thirty-two square feet.
About four hundred square feet, and we're looking at a roof for our facility of about thirty-eight thousand square feet. So it's a little bit different in terms of the scale.
Okay. So I, my concern is that anything that we're talking about is going to take up green space because of the structure that's going to need to be there to support it, whether there's an event there or not.
Yes.
And the bigger area that we try to cover, then the less space would remain open in, in quotes, green. Is that...
Yes, that is true.
Okay. So that's the dilemma that I, you know, I think that we all need to understand, you know. And, you know, we're hearing that, well, we need to plan for paid concerts. Well, no, we need to plan for a park that is active year-round, and we're talking about maybe adding fifteen extra. But how many successful events do we have now that have no cover, and really, in certain cases, not even any seats? For example, Wild Splash, they don't, do they sell special seating? That's just all open?
I'm getting a no.
Yeah, that's, that's all open.
The marsh pit is special.
That is a one-off, that's not...
No, no, but what, but what we're talking about is different types of events.
Yes.
Okay? We can't just talk about paid events with seats.
Right.
Okay? And right now, the majority of what we have is that. You know, you know, another example that we need to keep in mind is that, you know, St. Petersburg has had the Roof Fest. Closed event in a park area that is no longer going to, going to occur because, because of the, but that's a festival. And it has been very successful in the past as an open-air festival. So let's not get hung up on having ticketed, seated events as the only reason why we're going through all this and why we're trying to determine what kind of a roof to have. I was sort of in the back, I thought we had a slide there, and you just scared me, because I was trying to figure out what we're going to do with the, with the stage part. We've all agreed that we're going to have a stage part. We've all agreed roughly the size of the stage part.
I think it's there, because I noticed the same thing, it's like fixed part over the stage, and then it's the last slide you have there on the right-hand side.
It was on the right-hand side.
Right there. That's fixed over the stage and then has the part that comes underneath.
Maybe it was, and what I was thinking is, you know, here, we're Clearwater, we have the sun that we're trying to set. Is there some way that you can do spokes coming out that would have a... I'm not a good engineer, you know, a retractable, you know, where it rolls down those spokes. I thought there was, you know, similar to that first one that you had, and that's why I asked how many, you know, but what you're saying is it doesn't really, you would need an awful lot of them.
You would need a lot of them, yes.
Yeah, and that's what scares me. Yeah. Because that way, you could almost do it without having supporting stuff on...
It's possible. So if you wanted to go to a structure that has a large cantilever and less structure that hits the ground, it's possible, it just drives the cost.
Yeah. That's, that's the fifty percent as opposed to the fifteen percent.
Well, if we're talking about cantilever, cantilevering from stage out to the lawn without any vertical supports out there, it's going to be more than fifty percent.
Oh, well, that, you just shot down my idea, I'm sorry. All right.
Good idea, though.
Yeah, it was a great idea, it was fantastic, it would take care of all of our problems in a foul.
Mayor, I know that you brought this up before, but just to make sure everybody understands that the covered, the structured version of this would require some alternative ground cover. I think we've talked about that several times, rather than grass, the retractable, we could potentially have grass, we need to continue to study on it, but...
And I'm almost thinking that we should, probably should have had the discussion on the seats before we had the discussion of the roof. So why do we move on to the discussion of the roof?
Well, I thought we were going to get a second round and ask any questions around this. This discussion here is prompting a few more for me.
Okay.
Well, the only, the only comment is that I think it need, you need to have a fixed part over the stage, because more importantly than somebody getting rain, if the musicians are out there with all that equipment, we want to make sure that that gets, we don't have, want to have any leaking coming down on that and having to tarp everything. So that's why it kind of drew my attention to this one with the fixed, and then the part that comes out from that. But, so that's the only thing I would suggest, is whatever we do, we have a fixed part over the stage that covers it, protection for the...
And I would add to that, that the benefit of having the fixed structure over the seating area also allows us to have lighting, speakers, other things that you need for performances to be there fixed in place, which will cut down all the setup time that might be required
I saw one conceptual before that I really liked, I'm not sure where I saw it, but it also had under the fixed part, the monitors, the TVs basically, they were high, that, so people in the back can, you know, can see the big monitors, which was really nice.
I think that's an important part of this, for sure. And depending on the size of the event, there might be another set out at the leading edge where this canopy is also.
I should pull those.
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, that's, to me, that's a no-brainer, that's a given, that's what we have, that's what we have now, you have to have that. Or forget it, don't even build it. You can't call it an amphitheater, just call it a cement slab. I want to approach this from the community programming side, because first and foremost, we're supposed to retain the community character and availability for the community. Set aside the fact that the entire park is six acres, we're talking less than four acres for this. And I want to follow up on Dr. Cundas' comments where there's roughly two football fields left, not under cover, even if we only do the thirty-five hundred. By your study here, there's a thing that said thirty-five hundred seats is the current size trendy for boutique outside amphitheaters, is that the community will have not only two football fields, which they can do their, whether it's frisbee toss, picnic, whatever they want to do, out in the sunshine, twelve months out of the year, given the conditions. But then with this covered area, all of the other things that we've all talked about, you can ask Parks and Rec what those programming options look like, the yoga, the, whatever the daytime activities are, and if it's one connected total roof from the stage to the thirty-five hundred seats, or whatever that number, and I'm not sure, we're going to figure that out Thursday, right? Because tonight, we're just getting information this afternoon. To me, that enhances and expands community engagement and opportunity for that park by having a fixed roof, covered seating over a portion of it. And I've had several conversations with several different staff members, is that even with a covered roof, even if it was retractable roof, the amount of events we have, every person I talked to said, you're still going to have to have some type of artificial turf because of the imposing structure, or because there's not going to be enough sun, or because of watering. The operational portion of maintaining live grass under that covered roof or retractable roof doesn't make sense, artificial turf or some product, and at a two percent reg, they'll still be able to do any community-assed things they want to do. And I want to get to another important point, because this may be, someone in the audience may be able to answer this, or someone in staff, the Florida Orchestra wants to... The Florida Orchestra wants to come and they were looking to possibly, what conversations did we get? How many events did they want to do here? And the reason I ask this is, and I'm going to stage the question by this. In the diagram, you have an area called flex space in front of the stage. So what I've since, subsequent conversations have said, well, Florida Orchestra, they sell VIP tables. They're going to put 15 people at a table, white linen. And their crowd might be all white linen tables, not necessarily chairs. So artificial is absolutely the only way I see this going. And as opposed to snap-in lock-in seatings. Because Florida Orchestra, if they do 15 shows a year, they're going to sell 100 tables. So covered seating for only 3,000 seats may not be enough for a 12-person-capacity table, which is going to be one of the primary users as far as community organization, different demographic. So I wanted to throw that point out there, and I forgot what my question was, but.
I mean, to answer the question on those. Duncan's working on looking at his notes to try to answer the question on how many Florida Orchestra events there are.
Okay.
You lean into your microphone, Ken.
Yeah, sure, sorry. Yes, Duncan is looking into his notes to see what amount of events the Florida Orchestra would be looking at. He's got some information on that.
I seem to remember 15, 20, something like that. They're looking for a home, to do regular performances.
Wait, the Florida Orchestra has a home. Ruth Ecker Hall, Mahaffey Theater, and the Stras Center.
Outdoor venues.
Well, they already have three homes.
Duncan's looking for the information. If we find it today, then we'll get it to you. If we need to do it on Thursday, then we'll get it to you Thursday.
I guess when we, I'm done. Let's get it, please.
Any other questions? Okay. All right, thank you.
They were in for just a couple of performances.
If I could make one comment about Florida Orchestra, they have never been bashful about telling us what kind of space they need in order to optimize their concert making. So the focus in our conversation with them has been on producing concerts. I don't think we've had any conversations about other aspects of what they would like to see in front of the stage.
An outdoor venue?
Yeah, yeah, outdoor venue.
We should have had that. I mean, I think maybe we should have probably had that conversation.
There was a slide we showed in our last presentation about Simsbury, where the Hartford Symphony is their summer season. They do four concerts and they, incredible wall. They set up tables for their VIP customers. Set a table and they make a bunch of money doing that. So that's the model, which is widely used and it makes sense here.
Good afternoon. My name is Christopher Sprague and I'm Shawishaw Theater Planners. I'm here to give you a quick update about some of the questions that you've asked about the seating and specifically the removable part of it. Councilman Albert, you asked about sort of what those, particularly last time I was here, you asked me about, you know, what are the removable sort of plug-in options are? I've done some research with our firm around the country as well as the rest of the design team. We have not, my update is to tell you that we're not currently aware of any manufacturer that offers a standard, non-customized, off-the-shelf product that is a bank of four or five chairs that stab, as we've discussed, into the ground. A number of the seating manufacturers we've talked to have chairs that could be removed, but there would still be a rail or some supports that doesn't then support the idea of that seating bowl being available for park use because there'd be rails for whatnot. One of the vendors that, in fact, that Daryl's been talking to is a park furniture manufacturer who is investigating the possibility of modifying one of their products, but they're not confident they can make it work and it would come at a pretty significant cost increase over a standard folding stacking chair. Certainly what we've been talking about as we've been planning the whole park is the idea that, you know, in our, our understanding from the very outset, from the first time I met with staff and during the interview process was sort of the assumption that this was likely. Folding chairs is a bad word, right? You know, it's, it has the connotation that it's uncomfortable and it's not, you know, a pleasant experience to sit in. But some sort of stacking chair that could store densely, you know, so you can get 20, some of those, you can get 40 on a cart, so they stack very tall. You can roll them in and out of storage. There is storage planned in the park-wide area for that. Certainly any sort of five or four or three bank chair is going to not store as efficiently, so it requires more storage space. So we haven't gotten, you know, it's very early days to start talking about specifically which chair might be used, but certainly the trending indications would say to us that to give you the most flexibility and the most efficient use of your money would be to continue to think about, and this is how Duncan's built the pro forma, as I understand it, continue to think about stacking chairs that gang together. That gives you also the flexibility so that when you have events that want to use tables and chairs, you can use those chairs for that and not have to have an inventory of stacking chairs and your bank of seats. Gives you the flexibility to set that row spacing, you know. Certainly the 3,000-seat layout has an X, you know, has a certain row depth and that would be the narrowest you'd ever want to get. But if you had an event where you only needed 2,500 or something, you could play with row depth, you know, and give everybody a little bit more room in the row. So, you know, the flexible part of the park comes into play with, you know, sort of following that down. So barring, you know, certainly what I would think as we go forward in the design process would be to continue to study those options. We'll continue to engage seating manufacturers and see if we can come up with something that is more quickly, I'm not sure it actually would be quicker because it takes more people to set up those multi-bank chairs. But, you know, continue to investigate that as well as then when we get to the point where we're ready to talk about, you know, what are the, what is the physical chair? That's a conversation that will involve a lot of people and some mock-ups and some, you know, laying out some chairs on a slope and sort of getting into it. But that was what I have to share with the council and mayor right now is where we are with that process is that we have not yet found that stabbing the ground solution. And we don't necessarily think that that's going to give you the most flexibility we've heard you want out of the facility.
Any questions?
I guess, and correct me if I'm wrong, kind of the rule of thumb, you know, you go to Ruth Ecker Hall, you go to the Stras, there's no center aisles to speak of. So the further you have to go from, say, a center seat to an aisle, the more space you allow for people to be able to go. If I've only got inconvenience for people, if I'm in the center seat of the section and I'm going to, you know, interrupt four or five people to get to the aisle, you don't need as much space. But if you've got a longer way to go, they allow for more, correct?
That's absolutely correct. And the way it is sort of graphically shown there assumes that there will be multiple internal aisles and that the row depths, sort of chair-to-chair depth is set up to accommodate, and I don't remember off the top of my head, you know, if it's 10 chairs in a row, you know, that defines a minimum. We generally, whether it's amphitheater or performing arts theater or, you know, multi-purpose theaters, don't ever want to plan for less than three-foot spacing. If you've been to some of the old Vodville houses, the Broadway houses, you may find as narrow as 30 inches or even 28 inches. So modern comfort, modern expectation says minimum three-foot row spacing. And that then determines how many chairs we have to have in a row before we incorporate aisles. But you're absolutely right, certainly.
Just a comment, maybe staff can answer that. Outdoor venue, that might be dictated by fire marshal code, too. I don't know. It is, when I, if I involve in the events, why those aisles have to be.
Absolutely.
Never seen one three-foot for not.
The width of the aisle absolutely is determined by the number of people, but the row depth, minimum.
Oh, the row depth, yeah, I understand.
I think that's the one complaint that, I'm sorry, did you have a question?
I'm trying to get it into a question. Would you mind talking with the folks in Ruth Ecker Hall? Because they are the ones who suggested to us the row chairs. And they might be able to give you whatever source that they had.
They had mine, of course.
Thank you.
I think the one complaint that we all hear when we go to an event at the park is that the folding chairs that we have aren't very comfortable. And we try to, they're too small, they're too close, and they end up being torn apart when we try to tie them together. Are you looking at that same type of size chair? Or is there a larger, more comfortable stackable?
Yes, stacking chairs certainly have changed a lot. Something minimally as big as this or a little wider probably would be what you have here in Council Chambers would be sort of where I would want to see us from a comfort point of view. And the ganging mechanisms, which are absolutely required by, that hold the chairs together. So that as the fire marshals will tell you, so that, you know, when an exit event happens, those chairs don't interrupt the path, I think are getting much, are much more robust than, you know, maybe what you have currently, you know, on your chairs, which I don't know off the top of my.
Wire ties.
Wire ties, right. So there are intentional attachment points on the stacked chairs so that they are, you know, not simply relying on the wire ties. But yes, agree fully that folding chairs can be, a stacked chair can be a good, comfortable, and robust solution.
And along those lines, maybe we ought to make an announcement before each event that the reason that the chairs are tied now is for individual safety. You know, because I don't, I can't recall an event that I've been to that, you know, somebody had already torn apart those ties.
Well, then you have to talk about the panic. In case there's panic.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions of Mr. Sprague? All right, well, council, here's where we are.
Mayor, if I could, I just have a couple of different, I got a couple of different items to follow up on right at the end here.
Okay.
After the gentleman went. The first relates to some of the Capitol members that we heard that I received from Daryl.
Mr. Maxwell, you've got to talk into the.
Sorry, it's over here.
You know, or loud or. Turn his volume up because.
Oh, I can certainly.
Apologies. So there are a couple of areas that, you know, I just want to talk about a little bit before we get into the Thursday night questions, those sorts of things. One of them is on the Capitol side. I've just gotten those numbers, as I said earlier. We have not capitalized them over their useful life of, you know, whether it's the back of house, which I didn't mention earlier. It came in at 5.1 million is the estimate. That's pretty consistent with what we saw back in October when we talked. And then an average of about 10 billion for the covered, structural covered and then, you know, about a million dollars more for the retractable. On Thursday, I should be able to capitalize those in and be able to show you what impact it may have on the general fund from a financial perspective, operating plus capital. You know, but we need to make sure that we get those as useful lengthers as correct as possible so we get a good number. The other issue I would say is, I think it's really important as far as trying to make sure that we keep moving as fast as we can. Things like, things like what we were just talking about with Mr. Sprague. Knowing that what things are most important to you so that we can focus on those and make sure we come talk to you about those things. But there are some things that having those specific conversations about every item in the plan will stretch out this conversation. So I would suggest that whatever sort of the high priority items are that you want to see at several levels as we go through the design process, because once we hand it to them, my preference is to go and not to continuously come back to camp council on various items. So that would be extremely helpful to us if we can get those most important one or two things that you got. So just wanted to say that and happy to answer any questions.
So are you asking us to bring those to you on Thursday?
Or? I think it'd be helpful to know those on Thursday, yes. If you could, if you have some just main priorities that you've got on elements of this, some that might be more important than others. There are things like, you talked about the utilities earlier, right? You know, we have estimated, Santec has estimated a three-inch meter apartment. Now, that's preliminary estimate, but it's causing about an $85,000 expense. And we're only going to use about 15% of that water on a monthly basis. So we're not going to come close to our minimum. So there's some inefficiency areas where we would prefer to just try to fix the problem. I mean, be exactly what you said, which is a combination of a structural restroom system and quarter box, something like that, whatever makes sense.
And also with our one-on-ones with you, you did show me some modifications to the plan that I liked, having to do with parking and that kind of thing, and then also entry pavilion. So that's good. I'd like to get maybe some conversation on all that going, but I want to make sure we move forward on this part of the pavilion part of it as well, so.
Mr. Pogge.
Would it be beneficial for you to give our major concerns and priorities to Mark during our one-on-ones?
Sure. Whenever you're ready to share that.
As opposed to Thursday?
Absolutely. You know, we can talk. That gives us a little more time to maybe respond at the council meeting as well. You know, if we talk a little bit about how that affects us in our design process.
Right. Will we also Thursday get some visuals, some about a permanent type roofing? Because today, what that may look like, options, costs. I know we got, somebody threw a number out there.
Yep, and that number that Daryl gave to me and I sent out to you all, he has a rendering that includes both a permanent version of it and a retractable version of it. So I will provide that as well in the one-on-ones. I'll get back to you.
And then I'll just give you one question now. On that fixed roofing, to me, it seems like the panels could be a lot bigger with a fixed roofing. So you would actually have less vertical implanted support on the park structurally.
Possibly. I don't know the answer there off the top of my head, but we'll.
You know, I mean, less intrusion on the artificial turf.
Sure. Let us check. Let me check with Daryl and make sure that's correct. We'll be there.
All right, thanks.
Okay. Go ahead.
My two main concerns are not being in competition with Ruth Ecker Hall. And so that has to do with the number of seats. I think it's better closer to 4,000 than to 3,000. 2,500 would be in direct competition with that. And my preference is to go with four, at least provide for four, whether we ever put up four or not. At least, let's give us that opportunity. If we miss the opportunity, we'll never be able to pound the roof 10 feet and then the type of fabric of the roof, I think, is important, too. I think the most beautiful are the tent-type fabrics and there are good quality things that aren't canvas anymore that will last and are beautiful. And then the kind of seats, as long as they're, as long as they're safe and available and can be rapidly put up, taken down. I'm trying to think of what, what we're going to use that football, two football field size for 230 days a year when we're not having performances. And I really see taking up the chairs. Then you have half shade and half, well, a third shade, shade and two-thirds out in the sun. Being a senior citizen, I would head for the shade as soon as I could.
We have more on schedule for Thursday.
Well, council, I think we need to keep in mind as we go forward here that every time we throw something out that needs more conversation, that delays us going forward. And I would hope that by Thursday, we're ready to make these very difficult decisions. And I would hope that by Thursday, we're ready to make these very difficult decisions. For example, I came here and I still want a retractable structure, but I'm beginning to feel that that's not going to be feasibly possible or economically possible. But what I do want, and I hope that y'all will agree, that what we need is something iconic, that something stands out, that, you know, we can be, you know, proud of as a city, whether it's used as a park or used for events. And, you know, to do that, you know, it may be just 3,000 and figure out a way to make it a little larger. But we have to keep in mind that the whole area was designed not as a big, permanent out, you know, it's not designed to be a St. Augustine amphitheater. That's an entirely different type of facility. And we need to keep that in mind because, you know, our residents are expecting certain things from us too. So let's, by Thursday, be ready to say we want seats of X number. Because until we do that, they're not going to be able to do anything. Am I correct?
Correct.
So we need to decide that. We need to decide, you know, what type of roofing we do want, or do we want any, you know, maybe, maybe we'll decide we don't need a roofing. You know, maybe, maybe we can decide that if we do something else, we don't need the roofing. I don't, you know, talk to Mr. Maxwell and the staff between now and then on that, because that's a question that is going to, you know, it's going to dog us, you know, until we have that final conversation and final vote. And then, we didn't discuss the rake any today, and I know Mr. Cundiff had brought that up a couple of times, but help us, you know, just bring some clarity to that, because I know that was one of the points that you were raising, Mr. Maxwell.
Right, so we have, this is, I should answer, so let's see if I can zoom in here a little bit. This was provided by Kyle.
Louder, speak louder.
This was provided by Kyle from Sand Tech. And it's hard to, sort of hard to see the whole thing at one time, but the, on the left there, you see the, you know, sort of the points where the measurements that is on the right.
The school.
Are being, are being shown from, when I move over here, you'll see, this was sort of the, this portion of, and I'll go down and you'll see the rest of it. A portion of, this is the stage here, right in this area. And this is the seating area. That's the rake for the seating area down through here, okay? Mouse is a big jockey, I apologize for that. Now, below here, you can see where they actually showed, pulled back a little bit. So this is the rear portion of the green. And it is, it does have a retaining wall, but it's not, it's not the 10-foot retaining wall that we looked at at the previous meeting.
Sure. Kyle Steele, Lancy Park Tech, the Sand Tech. So what Michael was just referring to is that you kind of see a ghost of a bitch, like a hand rearing underneath. And this was very original, very preliminary stuff, where we had just a ban shelf, so just a stage and a lawn. The seats weren't there, we weren't designating an area for a certain amount of seats. It was just a wide open green with a ban shelf at the end. We sloped the lawn from the ban shelf all the way out to the green, our end of the green near the drop-off plaza. It was a 2% slope that required a retaining wall at the end to hold up the lawn. It was approximately four feet, maybe five feet at most. We have since been playing with that design so that we can move the high point inward so that we could reduce the retaining wall on that side of the green. So we can play with that high point throughout the design process. The movement in the lawn is only going to be about a foot or two in the lawn area itself, not the seating area. You're not going to obstruct views in that area, people will be on blankets, people will be standing, it's a more casual bit that takes place on that, you know, side of the aisle if you will. So again, as we move forward with the design process, we can start to manipulate some of the slopes on the green. Now, the slopes that are in the seating area, the rake that I'm referring to, those are set for visual, people being able to see over people, ADA view over top of standing people. And that is Chris from Shuler Shook has set those because he is the theater designer.
Question, Brian?
Yes.
So with that 2% rake, I'm glad to hear that it's been compromised, and we didn't want a 10-foot wall, even the 4-foot wall, then it becomes problematic. So let me ask you this. 2%, that's currently designed for 3,000 seats, correct?
That is the seating area, that is from.
Well, that's the entire seating area, but that entire seating area currently consists of being able to facilitate 3,000 seats, correct? Maybe Duncan has an answer.
So here, this oval, that is the area designated for the 3,000 seats.
Okay, so my question, my question, and observation-based question would be, an additional 1,000 seats at a 2% rake is still going to be minimally intrusive at the end?
Sure, because the further that we're going away from the stage, the wider you get with your seating area.
And your points of elevation would adjust.
They would adjust, yes. So it would essentially be higher, so you are, you will be increasing the percent slope on the lawn on the tail end, because you want to make sure they're providing enough area in the lawn that's directed towards the stage, not directed away. Same thing with the seating area, that again, is going to get a little bit wider as far as depth into the lawn, so you're going to sink away a lot a bit. I do not know how far.
Right.
We have done a seating study for 4,000, so I can go back and confirm that, and I can send that information back to Michael.
But based on the front of the stage, basically, the hole in front of the stage is a little deeper, and then you go up to minimize the impact of the transition from the end of the seats to the green, so there can be more, is this a correct assumption? So there's no 2 or 3-foot retaining wall?
When you're saying no, Chris, you want to explain that? For the seating portion, for the lawn portion, it's a little bit different. We can adjust slopes there, but for the seating portion, adjusting slopes are harder because of viewing.
The concern I know that a lot of folks are going to be, is the transition, the connection from where the seating potential area, whether we use it all or not, that transition needs to be smooth and not aggressive so that it's, what's the right word I'm looking for consistently, being able to use this? You can use the green and actually slip into maybe where the undercover is.
Right. Yes, the only thing I would say to why I was saying no is that if we increase the seat count, we would not want to lower the front flat section further to compensate for the extra, we just work it out. And over the course of, we don't want to get the stage so tall that your first few rows are like, are looking up more than a few feet.
Well, that and the fact that your venue is basically at sea level, you can't dig very deep before you start having water issues, so.
Right, right now, we're probably at an elevation, we don't want to go much further, maybe a few inches, but we don't want to semi-four.
Mr. Aubrey.
Okay, so you said the crest, and I didn't realize it was a crest in the middle of that green areas. I thought it was just going to be a gentle slope all the way to the retaining wall.
It's gentle.
Yeah, so it's a gentle crest. Now, if you're standing at the retaining wall, does that drop from the crest, how far does that drop from the crest to that, is it two feet? Or I guess, whatever it is.
One foot, two foot, I mean, it's, it's a gentle slope. You're not going to know, it's just crowning a sports field, that's all we're doing, just maybe.
Okay, so you're not going to really know there's a crown in any particular spot.
2% slope is usually the last slope that's undetectable by the eye.
Is it kind of like a crown in a 2x6?
It's probably gentler than that.
We're really just giving water to boot, so we don't have any puddling.
Okay.
Mr. Cundiff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Am I assuming correctly that the 10,000 people who are on their feet in the green part behind, they're not necessarily interested, it's not important that they see the stage, because they're going to have the big screens during.
They'll have the showings.
During the big shows.
They're going to be able to see the stage.
Yeah.
But they're not in a chair, that's what I'm saying.
And then to start a whole new round of questions, Council, before we finish for the day. The question on the artificial grass concerns me to a degree from the standpoint of the puddling that you're talking about. If it runs down there, where's it?
It actually drains, artificial grass actually drains really well. It's designed to do so.
Okay. But my concern is after, when we're not having events there, what's the potential risk to the city for injuries? Because we hear all the time, or, you know, all the time about some of the ball players not really liking to play on artificial turf compared to, to grass. And I don't, is that an issue that we need to concern ourselves about?
So I think you're kind of thinking of the old AstroTurf, where it was really hot and it was like falling on concrete. I played on that.
Yeah.
It's not fun. Artificial turf has come a long way.
Okay.
The way that it looks, the way it feels, the way that it drains, the subsurface, you're not necessarily going to be playing a sport in the area on this. So I would think that the quality of the product is, is going to be safe.
I mean, I've enjoyed walking on Truck Can of Field when we've had events there, but I keep hearing that they change it every year or every other year, so I, you know.
They don't have to pay for that.
They don't have to pay for that.
The manufacturers pay for that.
Okay.
But Mayor, I really, but I've also heard, and again, we haven't made our decision on the seating, but when you talk about the, there's a real risk if we're going to have some sort of track in the ground there, and then we're going to have the chairs go on the ramp, on the tracking and slide into position for use when they're not, that, that tracking has to be basically, my understanding, some of it will have to protrude above ground. And when you do that, that's going to be a metal track protruding above ground level. Somebody tripping on that, we're in big trouble.
I wouldn't.
We're, we're creating a real issue there.
Yeah.
So.
Mayor, we can, we can try to bring some additional information about artificial versus natural turf, you know, at the, for the Thursday meeting, try to get you that a little early.
Yeah, if y'all had thought about it already, it sounds like you had.
We use it a lot and sort of, I won't say similar, because this is obviously a unique project, but we use artificial turf a lot in different scenarios where we have a covering and we, you know, we want that green sort of horizontal ground plane we can't normally get because we don't have semi-showroom.
Question, Mason, here. Oh, another, I'm going to stop making.
You said it would have dropped the whole other run.
I know, I know, I'm going to stop doing that, Mr. Paul. So having, as an owner of a swimming pool, we have deco drains too, and I'm guessing if a facility of this size, even if such a small slope, that water's going to go somewhere, and we're getting ahead of ourselves, I'm sure this is design-based stuff.
Yes.
But I'm sure there would be that. One of the things we saw was the artificial turf, which I, and I see the quality of artificial turf we've used at the lawn center, that's really nice stuff, and it's rubberized and it's soft, so I guess I'm thinking that might be the latest and greatest. But what I saw, and one of the things that Mr. Webb showed us, one of the amphitheaters, it had the artificial turf, or maybe it was row grass for that particular one, and the walkways were like the rubberized cement, so that not only does it delineate, it's already fixed, but then you have all this grass area where all the other activities take place, and it also delineates more precisely where the chairs get and how they get set up, which is easier for anybody that's having to set up 4,000 chairs.
So you're saying the chairs are on, not the artificial turf, they're on.
No, they are on, the walkways were.
The walkways, just the aisles are on.
Just the aisles, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's something that we can accommodate in design.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Horton, Mr. Maxwell, do you need anything further from us?
I don't need anything specific, but I just talked to you in this place.
What is your intent for Thursday night?
Well, we'd like, we'd like some direction on those items that I, that I mentioned before, which I will run back through here.
You mean the four points, the.
Correct.
Comfortable with the financial.
Correct, the financial feasibility portion, and of course, I will bring some additional capital information, so you can, so you can use that in the decision-making process as well. Also, you know, what type of roof, whether or not it, you know, we absolutely want to do permanent or temporary, or if we want to, as I believe was suggested previously today, you know, maybe start design and look at, look at both options and see what makes sense once we get, once we get, you know, a design that, that we like. You know, and then also to, this has gone a little small on me here, let me zoom in here a little bit. Also, you know, the rake, we just talked about, a little bit about the rake, making sure that, you know, in general, you know, you're not looking at the one that has the 10-foot retaining wall, which I'm fairly certain you are not, and something more consistent with what Kyle was just talking about is, is acceptable. And then also on, on what other elements outside of the green you might want to talk about, so that we can try to get a, you know, a design, work order together that Sand Tech can, can operate quickly off of. So part of that is knowing what, what those, you know, those, those areas that are of most interest to you are, that we talked about, and you're getting one or two items that are, that are very crucial to you, and making sure that we, we know how to, how to best move forward on with those.
Mayor.
Mr. Horton.
We will send you those four things, so that it is crystal clear to you what we would like for you to decide on Thursday. My, my sense of expectation is that after Thursday, we'll have some pretty specific direction on seating and roof. Now, you know, we, we try to get to perfection and sometimes we can't, and like you were talking about, questions keep emerging. What I would like to know is that between now and Thursday, if, if it appears that we just don't, you all are just not ready for a Thursday decision, then I think we should focus on how best to use that time, and focus on those areas where you're, where you still seem to be struggling with, you know, decision making. And one way we will know that is just to check with each of you between now and Wednesday, so we can adjust that time usage. But, but my, my desire is, is that you can give us some pretty definite direction.
Mr. Aubrey.
One more question, Mr. Mayor.
We're going to take a break if we have too many more questions.
Well, I remembered now what kind of went away that time you asked me.
Okay.
And this is directed to you, Mr. Webb. You suggested under leadership that we put together an advisory committee, and you and I suggested that kind of we did the same thing with a conservancy. So I was asking you if that could be something that's the same, or would there be an advisory committee separate from the conservancy on the whole park?
I think it could be combined if there was some ability to take care of both things. Yeah.
Okay.
I didn't anticipate that, you know, that would be one of his recommendations, because all along, we have been kind of conceptualizing what does a conservancy really look like.
Yeah.
But since he has provided that, then that's just something we can fold in to our, our considerations.
Kind of made more, you know, clarity to me on exactly what the conservancy would do.
And I think folding it in is better, because then it's just one body.
Yep.
Because if you have two different committees talking, it'll only confuse us.
So, so in that context, I mean, I think it was a conservancy, at least in the plan, was conceived as managing the whole area.
Correct.
So he's not talking about managing the whole area, and his advisory committee was primarily focused on the entertainment venue. It doesn't mean that that committee couldn't do that, but I just wanted to make that point that, so that's why I think we'll fold that in to our conversation around the conservancy.
Just a comment on that too, because we, you know, we're, we're looking at one aspect of this entire park right now, and that's this performance. One of the things that is very important to us, it sets Coachman Park different than what, I mean, Magic Clearwater different than Coachman Park is, that this should be a park that's used all the time. Not just for performances, but there should be something.
Not just for performances, but there should be something going on all the time in the park. And that's why we're an underused park until we have performances, and then it's overused now. So I'd like to see, you know, all aspects of the park being talked about, and what we can do to get more people to enjoy it, so.
Mayor, just to, so everyone understands, both Duncan and Chris will not be in attendance on Thursday. That doesn't mean you can't ask them any questions, we can work together, and if you have any that come up that we need to talk to either of them about, we'll make sure that we, we get the answers to those questions, and we do have some conversation. It just won't be at the meeting here, and we'll have to, we'll have to work through it that way. But the, the other, the folks from SandTech will be here, as will our staff.
Okay.
I had three questions. April Fools.
I was going to say, I hope that's an April Fool's joke, because I was going to take a recess.
Well, I have one question that's not April Fools. In the pro forma, which was not, in my knowledge.
Go ahead.
Which was not in the pro forma, which Wes Merrick brought up, was the naming rights. Do we have data information, what kind of revenue that generated to do that? For instance, we talked about utilities, maybe Duke Energy pays for the roof and puts solar panels up there, which ultimately eventually pays the, I mean, is that ever, have you ever looked at something like that?
So, right, we have not included naming rights in the operating pro forma. It's, it's, you have to do some work to figure that out. Sometimes naming rights are applied to the capital budget, other times they're applied to the operating budget. It depends on what kind of a deal you make. You know, if it's a deal where somebody writes a check for X billion dollars, it makes more sense to apply that to the capital budget, or sometimes it's more like a, a five-year license agreement, where a company pays an annual fee to put their name on something, in which case, it's more inappropriate to put that into the offering. But we have work to do to figure that out.
Okay? We okay? Okay?
Good.
Okay? Okay?
He does name, name, uh, naming rights on page 27, it's there.
Part of the.
Part of it, I know.
Mr. Hamilton?
I'm good.
Thank you very much. We are adjourned. Our meeting will be Thursday at 6 o'clock.